Father, as we come to you this afternoon, this evening, Father, we just ask, Heavenly Father, Lord, that you would give each and every one of these individuals wisdom, knowledge, guidance, Father, Lord, to do the work, Lord, that you have set upon each and every one of us, Father. Lord, you have ordained, Father, from the beginning, a set of rules, a set of tasks, Father, that we are to do. You have chosen each and every one of us, Father, according to your good pleasure. Father, we just ask that this evening, Lord, as we come to you, Father, Lord, that you would just bless each and every one here, Father. Lord, that you would just lay your hand upon each. Lord, may it be a blessing unto each one of them. Lord, and as they serve you, Father, may they be a blessing unto this community, Father, unto this nation, Father. Father, for all things, Father, that you have ordained, we thank you, and we praise your holy name, Father, even for this. Lord, we just ask right now, bless us, keep us in your hands. Lord, we ask it all in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present. We have the minutes from previous meetings for tonight's approval.
Mayor McFarland, I would move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes dated March 1st, 2002. And then we accept for the record the planning and zoning commission minutes from February 11th, Casca Grand Youth Commission minutes from January 16th, and the Board of Adjustment minutes from August 11th, as they're presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims, sorry, dated February 24th through March 9th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the claims have been approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any staff changes to tonight's meeting agenda?
We got a motion there.
Anyone in the council have anything you want to... Okay. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Before we do that, I do want to actually move the reports to before the executive session, so I apologize for that. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move reports item N after or just before item M.
Do I need to...
Can I get an addition to the...
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Agenda is approved. Moved item G, which is consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Anybody have anything you want to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Powell?
I would like to move G7.
G7. Anyone else? All right, so we're going to remove G7 and consider it next after the approval of this agenda, the consent agenda. So Gloria, then, did I get a second or did I get a motion?
I didn't hear first.
I don't think you have a motion.
How about a motion first?
So moved, with the exception of G7.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda then is G7. Consider resolution number 5284. It's authorizing the submission of Proposition 202 grant applications to our neighbor's Hila River Indian Community.
Mayor McFarland, the reason I pull this is in appreciation of what... This is a grant from the Hila River Indian Community and Casca Grand Alliance, 66,000, Central Arizona Regional Economic Development Foundation, 36,000, Foundation Experience Core Reading Program Initiative, Penal Hispanic Council, 10,000, Casca Grand Valley Historic Society, 5,000, Cemetery, et cetera, Scattered Garden was not awarded, St. Vincent de Paul, 29,899, City of Casca Grand Arts and Humanities, 25,000, Pacific Railroad Underpass Project, and then the City of Casca Grand Arts and Humanities was 10,000. But this is an awful lot of money, and they have been really good sponsors with us. I know they called us before the Odomtosh this year, which I've mentioned before, and because of the COVID, they asked if we would not have it because they didn't want their people coming over and getting exposed and going back. So we've had a really good relationship with them, and I just wanted to, if people are listening in the public, to realize all that they do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell.
And I move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mary, did you want to say something? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is a resolution?
Okay.
Oh.
I need a resolution number.
Yes.
Yeah. Didn't we have a motion? Yeah.
They have the title.
That's right, sorry. I need to read. Would you please give us a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number 5284. A resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the submission of Proposition 202 grant applications to the Hila River Indian Community on behalf of various agencies for the purpose of benefiting the general public for fiscal year 2021-22, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the Hila River Indian Community for any grants awarded to the agencies, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Now you can approve it, Mr. Powell.
I move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is item I, which is award of contracts and considering a resolution number 5287. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement or issue a purchase order to Tank Holdings Corporation in an amount not to exceed $41,969. And this is for the purchase of 350 replacement lids for our 300-gallon residential containers that we have in our alleys. We are asking permission to use the HGAC contract. This is a cooperative contract that we've used for many purchases over the years, and this does give us a competitive pricing for these types of materials. The lids themselves retail for $119.91 per lid, and just to give you an idea, a brand-new container would be right around $225 per container. So we use one of our accounts in our operating budget for the purchase of these materials, and right now we currently have a balance in that line item at 90,000. So we have plenty of money to cover the cost of this purchase, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Kevin? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5287. A resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Tank Holding Corporation for the purchase of 350 300-gallon refuge container replacement lids, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Tank Holding Corporation.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of resolution number 5287 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is under boards and commissions, we have a... An ordinance, actually, excuse me, consider approval of Mr. Mark Bonzel. It's a reappointment of Mark. He is... He serves on the Police and Fire Personnel Retirement Board. This is requesting reapproving him for another term, which will expire on April 4th, 2025. Mark's done a good job. He attends the meetings regularly, as do I, so he and I are on that same board, so...
I think his previous boss, I don't...
Mayor, I'd move to approve Mark Bonzel. I'd also throw in a thank you. I don't know how many years it's been, but I'm guessing 15 or 20 years he's served on that board.
I know he's been on it as long as I have, so...
Thank you, Mark.
He was on it before I got there, so yeah, Mark's done a good job, so...
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Mark Bonzel to the Police and Fire Personnel Retirement Boards. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and again, my thanks also to Mark for his service. Okay, well, next is reports. So I'm going to start over to my right. Bob, you want to go first?
Mayor, the only thing I had was a thank you and a compliment on the State of the City address. It was entertaining, informative. I liked the way that you incorporated all the department heads and giving a briefing on their department. I appreciated it, and I'm sure our citizens did too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I guess what I would report right now is the bill that we sent up, it got passed by the House of Representatives. It comes up Wednesday morning, and... Or Wednesday after... I don't know. Comes up Wednesday.
This week.
And the... It looks really good if they can approve this. I think it had 54, four and six against when it went through the House of Representatives, and there's a lot more, a lot less people in the Senate. But if we can get that passed, one of the things that... Let's just tell the mayor that the augmentation board here in Casca Grand finally come days forward because we need to do water from somewhere. We have to have a new source of water, and unless we can get the rains to pick up a little bit, it won't happen. So hopefully, this will go to Washington, DC. The one thing that I had mentioned is that right now, a lot of people like to do infrastructure politically, and a lot of jobs were lost. Well, if they do this and put in the pipeline, there's a whole bunch of pipe fitters that are standing, sitting around, and there's a whole bunch of pipe sitting around, and so it might be a win-win that way. We'll have to wait and see, but as I say, I think it's pretty well covered with wanting to send this to Washington, DC to be looked at, so keep your fingers crossed.
Matt?
We had a youth commission meeting this past Saturday at the rec center, which was a lot of fun, and they are doing a great job despite everything, and they're having a scholarship competition, and there's going to be three $750 scholarships for juniors and seniors in the surrounding schools. The mayor gave it a good plug in the State of the City address. We appreciate that. And the theme of it is, what is the heart of Casca Grand for you? So they're making some sort of presentation, essay, video about that. And they are going to be the day of shredding next month. We're going to hammer out the date pretty soon, and we'll let everybody know that. And I got the honor of judging the plein air event, along with one of our youth commissioners was a judge as well, and other people in the community, and it's still amazing what everyone does in one day, painting, and it was astounding. So thanks, Gloria, and the Arts and Humanities and her department for putting all that together. It was a neat thing, and it had, despite the weather, which was a little cold, they saw 11 people participate, and people came from other communities as well, so 11 adults and two youths. So it was a lot of fun. Thank you for asking me, Gloria.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Lisa?
I just wanted to thank, you know, Larry and the mayor, you know, in your report, you gave an update on the fact that we won't be lifting our mask mandate right away, and I'm just grateful that we are holding off, you know, we're in that home stretch right now, and I know, you know, the governor has lifted some of the restrictions, but I'm glad we, as a city, decided to just hold off a little bit on that. I know people are very grateful. I'm sure many of you have gotten emails from people, and I think we're just getting so close. And so, you know, I just thank all the efforts for Larry and the staff and the mayor for making sure that we're keeping our citizens safe, and it's so nice when you're in the community. For the most part, people are wearing masks still. You know, there's not, you know, not at the beginning when people were angry and fighting and didn't want to do it. I mean, it's kind of a routine now, and if we can just get it another month or two, hopefully we can get rid of them for good. I did go to a wedding this weekend, and they followed very strict guidelines. You know, there was 50 people, and the tables were spaced out. There was four people to a table, and it was still a nice event. You know, of course, not the same, but it's nice to see that people are really following those guidelines still. And I wanted to thank, and I know Jeff will always, he always gives the update on schools, but I really did want to thank the school, you know, the administration and teachers, staff, everyone, because it's so nice to see these kids on the playground again. I live right by Soro School, and it's so nice. So many parents are grateful, employers are grateful that their, you know, their employees have their kids safe in school, so just thank you to all the efforts that the districts have done for our community. It's nice to have it back. So I'm thinking we're, you know, hopefully in a couple months, we'll be in good terms here, move forward. Let's hope anyways. That's it.
Just to go on what Bob said, Mayor, great job on the State of the City. I think we all received a lot of feedback that they felt that it was very entertaining, but it was very down-to-earth, and it was nice to see so many people involved in that. And I will say that you still got golf in, in the middle of your presidency, so I'm proud of you for that. Just a couple reminders. Kudos to, I know that we had a major cleanup on the south side and west side, and I found it really interesting when Larry gave his update, there was like six, over 600 tires collected and almost four tons of trash. While that's sad, it's great that we got it cleaned up. Now we just need the people to be responsible and keep it cleaned up. And then Friends in the Library Big Book Sale starts next Monday, so please support this group. Go to the library, and they have tons of books. Get all the books you need for the next year. And then Street Fair, I was able to go down and kind of drive through the area. It was nice to see some people downtown, saw a lot of people walking, and yes, they were responsible and had their mask on, so that was nice. It is again next Saturday, so you can have that. And Gloria, it was nice to be able to go down and see all the people outside painting, and it was cold, but it was really nice. So I'm looking forward to seeing all the pictures of the winners and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, and that's it.
All right. Mr. Lavender?
Well, Mayor, I have to say comments that Bob and Donna, you made lemonade out of lemons. They canceled the event this year, but also I wanted to say thank you to Sun Life and our Recreation Center for hosting the COVID shots. I took my mom on March 3rd. The organization was fantastic, and just to see the excitement in all of their faces and obviously, you know, driving my mom to and from there and the relief that she has being 81 and her husband being 88, that they provided this service was just touching. We are excited. We're on spring break this week, but we're excited the middle schools will be back five days a week. I enjoyed attending the Chamber Box Breakfast with the mayor and Mr. Rains. Larry shared some of his college jobs, some of his unique background, Larry. Appreciated you sharing some of your careers that you've taken part in, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Well, yeah, we had, I think we had a pretty successful State of the City address, and you can watch it again. It's on our website, so if you missed it, I'd encourage you to go check it out. It really gave a good overview of all of the departments in the city, which we haven't really done in the past, and so I thought that was actually pretty good. Turned out better than I expected.
It'd be on Broadway, you keep that up, doesn't it?
Well, I don't know. The department directors were pretty cool under the camera. Just a COVID update. Our numbers, we're getting a little bit of a spike this week. Not terrible, but hopefully we'll see where that goes. Hopefully they'll come back down. We are continuing to do vaccines, so please get your vax, get vaccinated as soon as you can. I think it's up to now 55 and older can get their vaccines, so that's a pretty good chunk of our population. And we will be setting up, I believe, a more permanent location, and more information will come out from our PIO, but we think we're going to have Sun Life kind of permanently located at Len Cola, at least for the near future. So they'll have a consistent location on where we can tell people to go and get their vaccines, so... The governor did issue some changes in the proclamations. Just want to make everybody aware of that, and it doesn't mean that masks are not required anymore. In fact, masks and distancing are still part of the proclamation and part of our proclamation. So we did lighten up a little bit on our events, so if there is an event that's over 50 and it's a public event, you do need a mitigation plan to submit to the city, but, you know, we are accepting those and we will review them, and if you need an example of some of those mitigation strategies, you can go online to our city website and just type in mitigation strategy, and you'll find some examples. So that should help somebody if they're interested in setting up some sort of event. The rescue plan is out. We're just getting the numbers. This is the national program coming out of Congress. Lot of questions still on what it can be used for, but we're getting more, a little more clarification each day, and as that becomes available, we'll certainly share that with everybody. But it is a pretty sizable amount of money that's coming into the state as a whole, so... Let's see, Penal AMA stakeholders meetings, we continue meeting, and I think there's some good work that's come out of that. Larry and I were part of that last week. We also, I also had a meeting with the Arizona Water Company and a couple of our staff. We went up to visit the, well, Stephen and myself went up and visited the Water Tower. If you've never been up to the Water Tower off of Thornton Road, it's huge.
It's big.
It's very large. It's going to be a very large canvas with whatever we decide to do, but I'm pretty excited. I think I know the Heritage Commission has volunteered to kind of take that on, so that will have them kind of leading the charge. And again, as more information comes, we'll get back to everybody. We continue to work with Arizona Water on a water resource plan as well. That includes a mitigation plan and an acquisition strategy and a conservation strategy. Those are the three main components to that. We got a little closer to that this last week, again, meeting with them and studying some way to optimize the relationship between Arizona Water and our water company to get water to Copper Mountain. So that continues to be one of my major focuses. And then single family building permits. We continue to show some really good numbers. In fact, through January and February of 2021, we had 109 new permits in January and 95 new permits in February, so those are huge increases over the year before where we had 77 and 68, so... Again, we're up about 42% on new home building permits, so the trend continues. And then I know it was mentioned, the neighborhood cleanup, I think that that was a really good effort on everybody's parts. You forgot to mention six appliances, one refrigerator, and one air compressor. So anyway, thank you for everybody who did show up for that and was out there to help clean up our city. I think our blight removal and our programs that we, which are part of our strategic plan, continue to work and give our city some good direction in terms of that effort. I did want to let people know that we do have a CAC regional training facility, which I'm not sure everybody knows about it, but it's a new technology training center that's at CAC. That ribbon cutting is going to be Wednesday, March 31st, and you are all invited to that. It's at 9:00 AM, so if you mark your calendars for that. And then the, don't forget, I know Steve mentioned it, Stephen Hardesty, but the CG Mountain Cleanup is Saturday, April 3rd at 7:00 AM, so I expect to see everybody there. Mr. Powell said he already participated. Mr. Powell said he already participated, so. All right, that's all I have. I do, one quick thing on boards and commissions. We've had some great volunteers, and I really want to thank them for stepping up. Donna and I had, I think, six interviews tonight, five or six, somewhere in there. And so some good candidates, we think, for some of the openings in our boards and commissions. If you are interested in any of those boards and commissions, please keep an eye out for the city website, and they're usually posted, and you can fill out an application and get on one of our boards and commissions. I do want to give a shout out to Donna. She's done a lot of work on organizing our boards and commissions. We're going through a whole revamp. Most, a lot of these, most of these haven't been touched in probably since the early 90s, late 80s, some in the 70s. So there's some inconsistencies in them. There's different terms. There's different term limits. There's, anyway, it's kind of a hodgepodge of things, and Donna's doing a really great job in organizing that. And so we're going to also combine a couple boards, so we'll give you more information when it's kind of all solidified. And Brett, she'll be calling you. So there, seeing who knows now.
When you're done, Mayor.
I'm done, Mr. Powell. Go ahead.
I just wanted, you talked about how big that water tower was. My first date with my wife, we bought a bottle of wine, and we went up there to watch the sun go down. We were sitting there and had flowers. I handed her, here came a policeman up. You can't be up here, sir. She went out with me again, though, so I asked her.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody have anything else before we adjourn for executive session? All right, seeing none, then I'll... Do I need a motion adjourn? I do. Can I get a motion to adjourn to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.